Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand for the singing of Oh Canada.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons come and. With holy hearts we see thee rise up north strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, Linda, you're good. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can certainly declare before any item. And approval of agenda, so I have two additions so far. 12A, public service, and 12B, an update on the org review. And I'm going to remove 8A because it belongs in the committee of the whole under information. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to add or delete? Okay. Thank you, councillor. Moved by, you got that, Linda? Okay, good. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Town Council's special October 13th.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, December 8th. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. And Town Council, December 15th. Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Good. Okay, number seven. So we have something special going on this evening. We have the presentation of certificates for Mayflower awards. And we have some of the recipients right here in the audience, so we're going to do that right here. And councillor Dennis is our Chair of Communities in Bloom that takes care of all that. So councillor, did you want to speak to that first and then we can go up? Or you just want to go right up? Good, okay.
So first, we'd like to call upon some of our certificates, the town here on the Communities in Bloom 2016 Mayflower Award. So our first one is to comfort in recognition of business during the display. Let's comfort in there. So I'm going to comfort in. We'll make sure to get back. So our second one is Robert and David Sarek in recognition of best block street scene. Would you like to come up, please? I'm right in there. Congratulations. Good stuff. Thank you for everything you do. Do you want to call it, someone to call it?
Yeah, Kevin's doing one.
Good, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Our next recipient is Les Barber in recognition of community spirit individual award.
Congratulations, Les, and thank you. So this is for the community garden?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so garden. Yeah, so for folks that don't know, the community garden, that beacon? This is who's behind that. Some good stuff. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
And our last is Yarmouth Sea Cadets in recognition of community spirit group. And they help take care of our waterfront in the summer and help clean.
We're getting the sign done, right? We're getting the sign done, right?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you. So somebody can take this, thank you very much. Good? So, so some good news for, for the cadets. A big thank you because you've been waiting so long for your sign. And we finally had that. I think that's on order, it just keeps, it keeps rolling and rolling. But we so appreciate everything you do.
More than that could help.
You really are the epitome of the community spirit, so thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
You'll get that sign, we'll celebrate that when that happens.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Good stuff.
I was starting preparing for this.
And a big thanks to the Community in Bloom Committee because they put a lot of work into everything they do. And, and they do this as part of, as part of what they do, so it's great. It's great to celebrate community. Okay, so we have new business. UNSM Regional Meeting, March 10th. I think I put that one on. So, so basically, we have regional meetings for UNSM and the, the area, I believe it goes from Shelburne up to Digby or, or very close to that. So the motion is that the town of Yarmouth host the UNSM Regional Meeting for Southwestern Shore Region on Friday, March 10th, from 10 till 2 at Town Hall. Move, you can make the motion, okay? Wade, did you? Thank you. Seconded by, okay. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carried. REN and LNO Committee Member. That the town of Yarmouth designate an alternate person to sit on the REN Liaison and Oversight Committee. So I'm the Chair of Liaison and Oversight for the, for the Western REN. So it would basically be if I couldn't attend a meeting. And the only time I missed a meeting is, I think, when I thought it was in Digby and I ended up in Shelburne or something. So it was, it was by mistake. But we're, we're looking for an alternate and, and certainly the alternate is welcome to, to come anytime and kind of sit, sit back. Oh yes. The, the REN is the Western Regional Enterprise Network. It is basically our, our economic development engine for this end of the province. I think most people at the table are aware of the board that we have. It's a business-led board. They have staff and we cover this entire end of the province. So the liaison and oversight basically just oversees, oversees what is being done, a couple meetings a year. So let's see where we are here. Somebody put a light on? No, Jeff, you're going to fix my machine again. You got it right once in four years. It's all right. I can run a town like nobody's business, but don't ask me to turn on the microphones.
Or run a light.
Run a light, exactly. Okay, go ahead.
Your worship, I'd be honored to take that place.
Okay. So we need somebody to make a motion to?
I move we accept councillor Wade Cleveland as the alternate to the LNO position on the REN.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Whose light's on? Is that yours, councillor Wood?
Yes, because I had one question. It says LNO Committee? It's not Law &amp; Order.
Sometimes it is. Sometimes it is. So did I explain sufficiently enough?
Well, I think so.
You think liaison and oversight, yes. So, so basically, it's, it's a, it's a board run and it's the business board. And I think you would recognize that, you know, Dave Ehrenberg, Warner Camau, you know, the, that team. So, so they, they are the board that looks after it, but they also have staff who does much like, sort of like we run things here. Go ahead.
Yeah, so just to, to add to that is, is because the board is entirely appointed from the business community, there isn't a direct link to the municipalities that fund it. So the governance structure is that there is a liaison and oversight committee that provides the communication link to, to the organization, back to the funders, and also receives their budget, receives their strategy and their annual report. And so when their budget request comes forward, the representative on the liaison oversight committee and myself will, will be able to speak to, hopefully be able to speak to any questions you have. And just further on that, we do have a, a regional meeting coming up early next month where Angelique, their executive director, will be present to, to brief you on sort of what they do. And, and again, that's an opportunity to ask questions.
Good. Okay, so moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. And councillor, I'll just let you make sure that you know when they are, in case you just want to attend anyway.
Certainly.
But other than that, for all of council, they do send out, I want to say quarterly, basically, quarterly updates, you know, when they have meetings. And I just make sure that that's distributed to council. Okay, good stuff. So REN membership, municipality of Barrington. So we, we have, we have had discussions with, with Barrington because we're, really wanted them to be a part of this. You know, they belong on, they're right on the shore. And so they have, they have accepted that. So the motion is that the town of Yarmouth accept the municipality of Barrington's request for REN membership. You want to move that?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded over here, Linda, you got those two? Okay, so, any further discussion? Go ahead.
Where the motion read, the, the, no, no.
No, you just have to press the red button on the left.
So the way the motion reads, it sounds like we're the only ones that have to give our consent to them joining us. In fact, it's different than that. So really, isn't it, certain the motion read, that we support their application for membership?
So what we, what we asked was that each funding unit go back and accept. So once we all accept.
So we would support their application for membership. Each other unit has to do that, it's not just the town.
No, not just us. Everyone has to do that separately, yes.
So I know it's technical stuff, but I think the motion should be to support their application for membership.
Yep, we can do that. You two okay with that? We can change that word, that's fine. Thank you, councillor. So, so I will say this, did we make, did we vote on it? No, we didn't. Okay. I, I want to say this as well, that, that with the REN comes obviously municipal contributions. So once everybody supports, each of them support, and we come together and we say, you know, it's unanimous, we're hoping that happens, then that's when the funding agreements will come out. So we won't have numbers until then. But we basically have something close that we could round out.
Will she, will they be engaging development officers as did the other municipal units? Or is there going to be a shared service on that?
It's, it's all, the REN is all shared services. And we did ask the question at the table, when, when Barrington comes in, does it mean, you know, all the resources go there to catch them up? But basically, everything that was done, because they're, I want to say they're so much like us and they're in, you know, the same type of thing, that all the information they have gathered is based on Barrington's information as well. So, so that's, that's great news. So, okay, so that is, you go ahead.
I was just going to ask the question, your worship, and Jeff, how many municipal units are involved in REN? Just a reminder for the audience.
Do you know that? Oh, good. I should. I can't, I always count.
So it, it, the region extends, includes Digby County, Yarmouth County, and the western end of Shelburne County. So the only municipality now that is not part of it is Clark's Harbor. So we have seven municipalities in.
With Barrington?
With Barrington. So Barrington had been at the table during the formative meetings, the, where we sort of figured out what we wanted to do. And at that time, it wasn't right for, it wasn't right for them to come in. But they've watched what we've been doing with great interest and have decided to join. And so what the mayor was alluding to is that with an additional municipality, what is, the opportunity that we have is increased provincial funding because we can increase the municipal share. So we won't receive a reduced amount or contribution because we have another partner. What we'll do is we'll continue at our level and there's additional money municipally and additional money provincially to help execute projects.
Good?
Good.
Okay. Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Tender re-single, single axle dump truck. Did you want to take that CAO?
Your worship, tenders were advertised on the provincial procurement website, as is required, and, and the town website, for a new 2017 one and a half tonne single axle dump truck for operational services. Two responses were received from truck dealers with responses as summarized by the town engineer. After reviewing the tenders, it is recommended the contract be, for the supply of the new one and a half tonne single axle truck be awarded to Tuscat Ford Limited in the amount of $53,681.50 plus HST. And it is within the allocated budget of $60,000.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
Are we replacing the? Are we replacing, what, what we can do with the old vehicle, if there is an old vehicle?
So what we've done with some vehicles in the past, we have sold them through public tender, through the newspaper. Other cases, we've put them on Kijiji and, and sold them that way. So I'll, I'll consult with staff, I haven't asked that question, what they thought is the best way to extract the most value from the truck. In another case, actually, we, we did sell a vehicle to a related corporation that had a need, but less demanding need than what we had, so they were able to make use of it. So not sure at this point what the plan will be.
Good. Okay. Any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Want to knock, thanks. Oh, there he is. Good, good call there, councillor. Okay, recommendation from joint council meeting, re-Domtex building. So the motion is that the contract for demolition be proceeded with and the industrial commission be authorized to finalize and implement the demolition of the Domtex building, subject to the ratification of each individual council.
Make that a motion, your worship.
So moved? Seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Councillor, deputy? Okay. Request for letter re-sledge hockey. Okay. So as I understand, they're just looking for a letter. A letter from the municipality acknowledging awareness that, that they've applied and, and about the project. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. So, so we, we have been successful as a region of purchasing a set of sledges to promote sledge hockey, which is a, a game that can be enjoyed by both people with disabilities as well as able-bodied people. The Mariner Center has, has hosted and they have plans to offer drop-in sledge hockey in the spring. And so one of the things, one of their ambitions is to be able to, to host sledge hockey events. But one of the issues with, with Mariner Center is that it is not as accessible as it should be in order to host such an event. Gil is applying for funding to, to cost share in some renovations that would bring us to a level we ought to be and would allow them to, to bid for events. So there, it should be expected that there will be a municipal contribution to this. It won't be fully funded by, by the province. Going from memory, I don't have the paper in front of me, but I believe it's about 50% funding. And we have three municipalities that would share in, in the municipal side. So it's an opportunity to get some work done that will benefit not only in attracting and hosting people with disabilities to participate in sledge hockey, but generally should be, should be good for accessibility for Mariner Center and to do it at 50 cent dollars.
Good? Okay, so, yeah, so we're just looking, the motion would be a letter, for a letter of support from the town of Yarmouth for the sledge hockey.
Your worship, I wish, I'll make a motion that the town of Yarmouth issue a letter acknowledging our awareness as a town that the Mariner Center Management Board.
It is.
Mariner Center Management Board has entered into a project as outlined in this letter of January 9th involving sledge hockey. We are aware of the project, we support the project, and we understand there may be some municipal involvement or funding required from the town in regards to this, and we're prepared to entertain that when the time comes.
Now Linda, if you can print that off.
Wire me up. Yeah, sure.
Good stuff, good stuff. Thank you, councillor. Okay? Seconded, any, go ahead, CAO?
Yeah, just one other comment I forgot to, to mention is that both of the other municipalities have already said yes to this, so that makes it.
So we don't have to do some sleaze thing like say, subject to the others coming in.
Right.
You should be a lawyer. You think all this? We're quite liking this.
I was reading from the thing here, it's in Italian.
I know, but you think all those.
I added a bit to it.
It's, it's, it's good to have. Okay, so the question's been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Request from Southwest Biosphere, re-letter support. Did you want to do that, deputy?
Thank you, your worship. I'll make a motion to send a letter of support for the funding application for the Southwest Nova Scotia Biosphere Reserves Association.
Thank you. Second, councillor Barry. Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Reports, council advisory committees. Okay, is that you, deputy? These are, oh, I've got the planning, sorry. That's right under it. Planning advisory, councillor McLeod. Okay. Go ahead, councillor.
Two, two items. I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to permit the use of a portable, open-air cinema theater at 5 Hard Scratch Road. The use of the equipment and concession stand will require a special occasion, occasion permit at the time. But we'll call for a change in definition of a special occasion in the land use bylaw in order to allow this. This change is, is recommended as outlined in our planner's report. And if there's any questions, I know that Wade and I were, and Sandy, I think, were there. But also Morris Lloyd is in the audience if they have any questions. Morris Lloyd is a world-renowned planner.
And he's ours.
And he's ours, yes.
Deputy? I fully support, but I just wonder, how many Morse, or Jim, or Wade, or councillor Dennis, how many special occasion licenses can you get in a year?
That's a good question. Do you have that answer? How, how many special occasion permits can you get in one year?
There's no limit.
No limit. Good?
The idea is that they would be used if you're going to a special event, like a fundraiser for something and that kind of thing.
Okay. Any more questions for our planner on this one while he's here? Go ahead, councillor.
Need a second or?
Oh. I think councillor Barry seconded that right away. Okay. Anything else? Call for the question?
Question?
All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, councillor.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to update and fix errors in the urban design standards and to enter into a development agreement with 313 Main Street to allow the facade changes which were completed without a development permit as outlined in our planner's report.
Seconded by councillor Barry. Any discussion or questions for our planner? Call for the question?
Do you remember Wade?
Yeah, I remember. All those in favor? Aye, contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
Thanks, Morris.
Okay. So we have reports for information attached, we're good on those. No mayor's report. Any questions for committee chairs? Good? Okay. Additions, okay. So, public service? Oh, yes. Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. It's always nice to have an opportunity to bushwhack a fellow councillor. So I'd like to, like to make a motion and I'll speak to it for a minute. I hereby move the town of Yarmouth send its most heartfelt congratulations to Jim McLeod on his recent work retirement. Nobody's going to second that?
I think we all second it. You can report everyone seconding that, okay? Go ahead.
Your worship, Jim has spent 60 years on Main Street from, from being 12 or 13, working in the drugstore business till this very day. You can see the improvements on Main Street from his work with the YDC, the waterfront, Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation, the Nova Scotia Archive, the Western Branch, the YMCA, and of course, his work here on Town Council. If you ever went into Jim's store, and I didn't on, I didn't do that much on occasion, but we were in the same business, Jim treated all his customers like friends. He mentored not only pharmacy people, but he mentored many students, adults, in his profession. He had a sad moment this past weekend with the burial of his mother, but Alma was a great lady. If it's any indication, Jim will still be sitting here at this table at 96 years of age. So I think her funeral, which was a great, great send-off, it's also a testament to what Jim has brought to this community. So Jim, on behalf of the Mooney family, Town Council, I sincerely thank you for your dedication, your work. And I know it's, I know it's not, when I say work, if you've ever seen Jim in the drugstore, you've ever seen Jim around any table, it's not a work. It's a work of love, so. Jim, on behalf of myself, thank you very much.
And for the record, now that he's done that work, and, and I'm in the office every single day, and in the neighboring office, which is the councillor's lounge, I found councillor McLeod every single day. And it's wonderful. Go ahead, councillor.
I don't sure if I can, I don't know how to respond. Except that it's not the end of the day, it's a journey to the end. So, and it's been a fun time, actually. There are some challenging moments, as you all know. But I'm going to keep on going and keep the same routine and just busy myself in slightly different ways. So, thanks Phil for those words, I was, I'm totally surprised. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, and the, the last item is the org review update, CAO? Good, go ahead.
I'm not sure what you said there.
It's nice to have Siri at the table, yes.
So your worship, the, the process has gone along, it's taken a little bit longer than we, than we had hoped initially, but our consultants were in through the fall, and interviewed fifty of our staff, and staff of some of our related corporations. They went away and took a great deal of time in preparing a report. Their plan was to present me with a draft report to review, to comment on, and once they received my comments, finalize their report, which will then be presented to you. We are at the phase where they have presented me with their draft report. So it is, I've read through it twice, and have a long list of, of comment suggestions, what have you, so, and I've corresponded with Scott Coleman, the principal, to, to understand exactly what he wants from me at this point, and, so he'll get my comments in due course, and he'll probably, I'm going to guess, late next month, probably will have a report. So that's where we are.
Good, thank you. Okay, approval of invoices.
So moved.
Moved? Seconded? Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried, and the date of next meeting is February ninth, and it's eight, it's eight oh one?
I think it's still a record.
I think it's a record.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, we need, I think we did twenty minutes once. We need to go in camera, I did just receive a message from, no, I'm not even going to say that. Okay? So a motion to go in camera, please. Okay? Kevin, you wanted to talk to me? Did you want us to speak with, and perhaps the deputy on the other issue?